About thirty seconds here. Is the gang all here?
I think the gang's all here.
Dan Lee, you still with us?
I'm here.
All right.
Maria here? I don't see Maria.
I'm here.
Yes.
Okay.
She's here. The city council regular meeting will now be called to order for May twenty eighth at six P M. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation be given by Councilman Jim Bernard.
Thank you. Father, thank you so much for your love and thank you for being with all of us tonight. Please guide us through this meeting and make sure that we do the wishes of your will and not our will. And we do the what's best for the city because the people we represent. Please be with all of us and all those caregivers and first responders and keep them healthy and safe. And just please keep Avon Park as safe as we can be. In Jesus' name we all pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag and states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, liberty, justice. May be seated. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a form. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes ma'am. Kirk Resolution twenty twenty dash oh one, just extending the state of emergency that's already in place. Anyone have any questions or comments on that?
No. The resolution of the city council of the city of Avon Park, Florida, informing the state of emergency, authorizing and directing the city manager to take whatever prudent actions. Oh, I'm sorry, you need to read this. We're just trying, we're just adopting what was already extended by.
Right, exactly. Yep, we're all good.
Yeah.
Under consent agenda, we have the minutes from May eleventh, twenty twenty, regular council meeting. Be looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the, um, regular council members' meeting for May the eleventh, twenty twenty. That's listed in the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or changes?
I do have one question.
Yes ma'am.
On section E, under citizens and outside agencies, there was a motion for the community center and the fire department buildings to be hardening for the hardening grant. Wasn't the rec center included in there as well?
Rec center? You mean the, uh, Boys and Girls Club?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I believe it was, yeah.
I wasn't able to look at the video because it's not uploaded yet on YouTube. Otherwise, I wouldn't ask. But anyway, I don't, if the rec center is included in there, then that change would have to be amended to that, to those minutes.
Yeah.
Anything else? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Member Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number six, Fourth of July fireworks with Travis Turner before he gets going, if he's here. Um, was there any forms that was turned in or pricing or anything?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sent those in today. I'll go ahead and let him talk.
Could you say that last part again?
I'll go ahead and let Mr. Turner talk. He's on.
Okay. Travis, what can we do for you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, fantastic. All right, sorry, it's first time doing this one, so, uh, good evening, everybody.
No problem, brother.
All right, um, let me get the, my glasses out where I can see this. I appreciate you getting me on first. Okay, um, just wanted to thank everyone for having me tonight. Uh, the, uh, what we're requesting for, as always, has been a Fourth of July celebration, uh, the fireworks display at Donaldson Park. If you, I sent the request in, but I'm assuming everybody doesn't have it because I sent it late. So the, what, our number, first, we request the permission to launch fireworks, uh, from the center of Lake Verona, as in the past. We request the presence of the Avon Park Fire Department at launch site. Request assistance of the Highlands County Sheriff's Department with traffic and crowd control in and around Donaldson Park. In past, we've requested, uh, the road closure of Main Street and Miracle to Verona Avenue, uh, just from six P M to ten P M. Uh, it's just same as we've always done. I requested closure of Donaldson Park to all automobile traffic from six P M to ten P M. Uh, and once we're, we are approved, obviously, we'll have the proper permits done with the, uh, pyro display company. And, uh, we also will obtain the insurance needed as we have in the past.
What's your request?
This year's show, we're looking twelve thousand is what we're looking at spending.
That's, is that, Travis, is that for the, uh, our share or is that for the whole, um, thing?
The whole, the whole, the whole, the entire, yes.
So you're requesting twelve thousand dollars?
No ma'am, five thousand, the total cost.
Okay.
Oh.
Total cost of the show is five. Excuse me.
Okay.
Requesting five thousand, the total cost is twelve, I apologize.
Okay.
Twelve thousand is same as last year?
Yeah, yes, sir. My knowledge, if I look back, it was either, uh, it was either twelve or thirteen last year. Funding was a little short this year because of the COVID shutdowns, uh, we've experienced last two months.
Okay.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Just say, if in the event that we approve this tonight and then, um, come the fifteenth of, uh, June, um, things get out of whack and, um, the, the July fourth thing is canceled, then what happens?
Well, we can, uh, with the pyro display company that we've used in the past, they have offered us rain dates. And depending on the discussion, obviously, tonight, how far out he can extend it, so.
Okay.
We would still plan on having the show at some point, I mean, no reason to waste.
Gotcha, okay. But saying that, I think your problem with approving this, um, request for five thousand dollars for the Fourth of July fire.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that, I moved that, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'll be happy to second that.
We have a motion and a second. Further questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, everyone, I appreciate.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
Yes ma'am.
All right, next up, we have item number seven. Um, this is actually going to be the second reading for ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty, fire prevention.
Ordinance of the city of Avon Park, amending chapter fifty, fire prevention and protection, article two, fire department, vision two, fire order retirement system of the code of ordinances of the city of Avon Park. Amending section fifty dash fifty-six, benefit amounts and eligibility to provide that monthly benefit amount shall be three ones and sixteen one hundred percent of average final compensation for each year of credited service, regardless of date of hire, providing for godification, providing for servability provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing effective date. This is a public hearing.
Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty can now do so.
Call me later.
Kim, is there any audience that wishes to speak?
No one.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Members of the council, is there any questions or comments on ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty?
Only comment I have is since Brian Code, he has reviewed it and approved it, and I make the motion. We go ahead and move forward and, uh, approve item number, he said, the second reading, ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, Brenda.
Okay. We have a second, any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item number eight, discussion of annual audit delay. Mark, I'm assuming this is you.
Yeah, I'm gonna, oh, anything, I'm gonna hand this off to Dan. We should have had him on there too, but he's, um, can probably speak better and, and if he doesn't bring something up, I will. Go ahead, Dan.
Take it away, Dan.
All right, I'm going to qualify my comments first by Mark, uh, suggesting that CPAs stick together and never say anything bad about each other. It's not absolutely, that's not always true. Um, we have a CPA, basically, um, uh, not our auditor, but someone who was assisting us for several months. And I believe he's been doing this for several years. And, um, and John, um, has, uh, basically fallen behind. Again, my understanding is, uh, this is the second year in a row, and I wouldn't have been, uh, all that surprised if it was more than that. Um, we have one of his staff members that also, uh, comes out, uh, week, uh, I'm gonna say bi-weekly to assist with, uh, some of the, some of the payroll and, and benefit, uh, administration, at least just, uh, getting things together and making sure that we're staying up to date on that. It's quite a daunting undertaking. My hope is that before, um, my real concern is that we're going to be late on the audit. There is no penalty per se, although, um, I guess the, the authority or the power to withhold penalties exists. Uh, it's never happened, uh, in the opinion, uh, at least in our outside auditors', uh, recollection. However, that always, uh, that, that's one thing that always, uh, kind of sits back in, in back of my mind. We're, we plan on contacting the auditor general of the state of Florida to let them know that we're going to be late. But they do not have any authority to, uh, basically, uh, delay or, or extend beyond, uh, nine months after a year end. They don't have that authority because it's a legislated, uh, deadline. So the only people that have that authority is the Florida State Legislature, and I don't anticipate that extension being there. Um, hopefully, we'll just, uh, we'll be, uh, in better position next, uh, for the twenty twenty-one, uh, I guess it's the nineteen twenty, actually. Um, and as I originally leading up to that, um, my concern is, uh, we're gonna finish this audit, get our final report, I think somewhere in July or August, and then September thirtieth, the year ends and we start the whole process over again. But, uh, um, I'll say the one bright side, if there is to any of this, is, uh, it's baptism by fire on my part and as well as the, the other managers here at City Hall. Um, because, uh, in my opinion, uh, it's almost as good as any way to learn, uh, you know, what has to be done, what, and, you know, and, and how to get ahead of that curve. So I'll let Mark add anything in that he thinks I've forgotten. And, uh, it's a, it is a boilerplate letter, uh, is my, also my understanding, um, that when you're behind, um, there for you, uh, Clifton Larson, this Julie Fowler, and so she's required to let you, you know, and to be transparent about it. And we had some discussion, uh, before that letter came out, so, uh, that's where I'm going to end, unless there's some other questions with me.
I'd like to ask a question for Dan, if I could. In the short time that you've been here, you think it's worthwhile for us to look at, uh, somebody different as our internal auditors? That just, uh, has been a similar problem two years in a row? And the fact that.
That's probably, probably not a good idea. Um, only, and the only reason I'm saying that is because all four of us here, our anticipation is that we will be transitioning away from him almost altogether.
Ah.
And that's the whole idea is that we'll be, you know, we'll, we'll have our team going, we'll have, you know, a stronger accounting department. And again, I, whether it's gonna be, uh, six months from now or, or whenever that happens, uh, you, I, I believe the council will see as the further down the road we get. But, uh, there will be some transition, um, I'm sure after September thirtieth. He's got a lot of, uh, I'm just, the complex schedules that, uh, you know, I think I'll be able to pick up generally, uh, quickly. But, uh, you know, it's, it's also getting, uh, you know, for example, uh, it looked to me like they were reviewing almost the entire works, uh, almost every transaction, it felt like. And if we can get some of these schedules, um, uh, and keep them more up to date, I believe that, um, that problem will, you know, basically disappear.
Okay. Do you have any other questions for Dan or Mark?
No.
I, go ahead, whoever that was.
Mark had anything he wanted to add, actually, before.
Mark, do you have anything?
No, Dan handled it well. Thank you, Dan.
Maria, what was your question?
I had a question. You were talking about, um, the, the only delay from what we see is this one situation right here, but they're not. So there may be other dings that we might foresee that are not included in the letter from, um, Clifton Larson and Allen? I mean, is that a fair assessment or are we squeaky on everything else?
I would say, I guess that's fair, but, um, you know, the pension piece and, uh, and then John's work internally, uh, those are the two reasons they're citing at the moment. And I don't think they have any other, uh, any other issues. And, you know, internally, um, we've had, had, um, a couple delays as well, um, just because, uh, staff illness and things like that. But, uh, we just seem to be so far behind, um, that, um, I don't think there's any other thing. I think Julie, uh, Julie was just citing, um, those things at, at the moment. I, you know, um, I suppose you can add more things, but that's not gonna, if she does add more things, it's not going to get us finished any earlier.
So at this point, do you have all the pension info that you need? Are we caught up at this point?
To my knowledge, I think, uh, that is, that's, that's been delivered.
Okay, so then if that's delivered, then this should be able to get done rather, relatively sooner than what the letter implies, you know, drastic that, that it wouldn't in time.
Yeah, um, the fixed asset schedules, those are the things, uh, that John's been working on that we're not quite there yet. Um, the reason for the delays is because they, you know, they can't bring the horse to water and then wait for us, you know, to, to give, give them the buckets, you know, for the, for the horses to drink. They've got other clients as well. And so the, the real delay, getting back on the schedule.
Well, can I have, can I make just one suggestion? I mean, if this is the second year that we've done it, obviously, we're having a, a problem with process. And it's likely because we don't have, obviously, the continuity of, of individuals at City Hall. So that's by no fault of yours or at all. But if we had a policy in place, I know that, um, Carol, um, the pension administrator, used to work for the city decades ago. So she knows the internal process. If we had some, something similar to a trim notice for the pension information, that way we could get it in time. It would hopefully alleviate this in the future. But I spoke to her, um, a few days ago, and, um, she happy to help with the process and, and let you know on what date this, on what date that, and on what date this, because I understand you have to have two separate pension infos, one fiscal year and the other one is calendar year. So, you know, she can help you with the process there. Um, by the way, she had a very good comment to make about our H R manager. She said that he was very, very responsive to her requests for information and that he got everything back to her lickety-split. So, you know, kudos to him and not having done it before. So I'm just saying, if, I don't want this to happen again, you know? And we pay a lot of money to our, um, cities, our consulting accountant. So if they're getting behind on that, um, my worry is that, are they behind on anything else that we're unaware of? You know, the payroll and benefit aspect of things seems to be, are we ever gonna be able to take that over ourselves?
I'm, I'm hoping we will, you know, and we do have, uh, we're looking at one other staff member, a financial analyst, that's still in the budget for this year. And we're trying to firm up the, uh, I call it the, the posting itself. Um, in, just to take a little bit of a, a, a catwalk or bird walk, whatever you wanna call it, um, I contacted, uh, Penny Robinson. She's just my counterpart at City of Sebring, and I just asked her, because my concern is, uh, you know, a lot of the legal deadlines for the trim notices and things like that. I said, do you have any kind of a calendar or something that, you know, that you can share with me? And she gave me, uh, you know, a month by month that her accounting department uses, a spreadsheet. And I immediately put all those on my electronic calendar. And usually, uh, I give myself about a four-week note, uh, just so I know that it's coming up. So I must have, uh, forty or fifty things out there. And I also create a recurring reminder on an annual basis. And I'm in, I'm gonna just say I'm in my early sixties, so I put that out for ten years. Um, so I'll be reminded, uh, well into, uh, hopefully, my retirement years. Uh, and then the person behind me will have two or three years, hopefully, of those same notices. Um, and that's kind of a process I do, for example, just, I get things on my calendar so I don't forget, um, because, uh, you know, you do. Sometimes you do forget. So I'm hoping to get my stuff out there far enough. Um, I also want to get the pick list from, uh, Clifton Larson. That's basically their list of everything they want. And, uh, you know, mid October, we start getting that, some of that stuff together, like, uh, council minutes. There's no reason we can't have that, uh, you know, even running audit file for them. And, uh, and I promised Julie that probably after the, uh, twenty twenty-one year, which would be, uh, October of twenty twenty-one, she'll be very, uh, pleased, I believe, with the content and the way we'll, uh, we'll handle this. And I told her, we can't, my experience is, it can't be a fun audit for her. And by the time we get everything straightened out, I told her she'll probably be handing it off to somebody else and she won't be able to, uh, enjoy the benefits of, you know, of her labors as well, so.
Which brings me to the last sentence of her letter where she talks, to go ahead and provide an opinion or issue a report or withdrawing from the engagement. Is there any sign of them wanting to withdraw from this?
I don't, I haven't, uh, they've not said anything to me about it.
Okay, and then my last, I'm sorry?
No, I just, I haven't heard that either.
Okay.
Also, our H R is, um, in the process of taking over the payroll portion, and he's been doing that for a few months. So he's moving in that direction.
And so the last question I had, and it goes off the heels of this, are we gonna be okay with our budget? Because we haven't started that at all, and I think we're gonna be behind on that and really rushing through it if, if this is gonna be the, you know, task du jour for the next three or four months. Um, who's on budget for us, you know, and our plan and all that?
Well, I've gotten, uh, I've been, that has been a lot of what I've been doing, uh, early on here. Um, I asked Julie, um, for the last, uh, a spreadsheet, basically, of the last five years worth of audits, which takes us to two thousand eighteen. Um, we're working on nineteen, and, um, I basically then went through, uh, Ricky, um, his, his audit last year and started, uh, bringing all of Julie's information into her, uh, into, into his spreadsheets. I would say on the expenditure side, um, we're, I'm about as far as I can go until we start meeting with managers. And then at some point in time, uh, I'm totally understanding the process, um, or having gone through the process, I should say, at least once. Um, I, I, I know that somehow council, uh, becomes involved in that, uh, in that whole process, the budgeting process. So the expense side, I'm very comfortable with. Uh, we mapped out salaries, uh, fringe benefit increases, uh, particularly the, uh, health insurance. Uh, and again, the revenue side is a little bit, uh, where I'm a little bit, um, I don't know what I'll say, I think, would be a good word. I'm only understanding the funding mechanisms and formula and, uh, talked a little bit with Penny on how she does some of that. Um, you know, I, uh, registered for a couple webinars on the trim process. That's the one thing that, uh, I think I'm probably most, and the legal pieces is, you know, making sure that we hit these deadlines so that we can, uh, so we do have that capability of, you know, uh, not having to, you know, not being able to do something that, you know, that would devastate, uh, the city, I guess, and our ability to, you know, function on the revenue side. So, um, looking at that, I just, I could believe all the tax sources, the communication, the gas, the sales. Um, but we're working through that, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have anything else for Dan?
No.
Good. Moving on to item number nine, financial assistance, COVID nineteen. Maria, it's you.
Well, this, again, falls on the heels of our C R A discussion on seeing where we're gonna be with any type of funding. Um, once we carved out Main Street, South Side, and City Funds, um, I had communicated earlier today, um, with Dan, and he informed me that, you know, well, we have other funding areas where there might be potential use of funds to help offset some of this. But not until we have a idea from him on the feasibility of doing this, do I really wanna, you know, square down how much money we wanna give out. I'm even contemplating if you guys would be in agreement. You know, we could even look at two hundred dollars for the businesses versus five hundred, you know, and for the residents. Um, I've called several residents today, and they're thrilled with twenty dollars in one month. If we just did twenty-five dollars in one month, um, or twenty-five and twenty-five for two months, there's a lot of ways to skin that cat. Um, you know, I don't know that we wanna go, and by the way, in terms of the, uh, number of residential accounts, those are inside the city limits, correct?
Yes.
Right, they're, okay, so, okay, and a lot of these businesses, if, if, I mean, a lot of these homes, some of them are empty, you know? So again, it's gonna go back down to those that have an actual live account. If they don't have an account open with the city, then they don't get anything, because that means there was never a business center to begin with. I'm sorry, a residence or a business for that matter. But again, this is gonna be reliant on the numbers that you guys come up with. Um, you know, if we can afford two hundred dollars for the businesses, that's great, but one fifty, I think, is a good number as well. But I'll leave it up to staff to see what's the most feasible at the end of the year, that we're not, you know, on the hook for lots of incurred debt off of this. I'm looking to see that we use the funding that we talked about, about four months ago, that there are some funds that are, I wouldn't call it surplus cash. I would call it money that's not going to be spent based off of, you know, employees that haven't been hired yet. You know, that money is still sitting there. You have some money that we ended up putting back into the contingency that were left over from the employee buyback program. There was money in there also from, uh, uh, an employee that was funded twice, and that money went back into the contingency as well. So there are some funds there that I'd like to see that if we can do this, we use those first, then tackle the businesses with the C R A funding, if all possible. That way, we're not cutting into any department's money.
Maria, may I ask? Do you have? Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Okay, Maria, do you have an estimate figure as to amount of the, I'mma call that found money?
When I was doing the math and with the paperwork that was provided to me from City Hall, it was just under six hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's good enough.
But you know what? It, it could have been wrong. Um, I found out that we also have the, um, what's it called again? The, um, unassigned funds, and I don't know, you know, just found out that our insurance money from Irma went into the unassigned general fund. So there's, I don't know that, if there's any money left over from the old police building, for example, that was, I thought ninety-eight is now two hundred and eighty thousand. If we only use a portion of that to demo the building, we might have some money left over from that that's in the general fund, and we can use that to simulate. So again, it's gonna come down to Dan being creative with what's there without hurting the bottom line with the city. You know, I don't wanna be, look, um, I just wanna do the best we can with what we have without having to cut in. You know, it pretend it's your own personal budget, so something that helps into the community, right? And look, if it doesn't work, at least we did the exercise, and I think we tried, which I think is something that we need to do every single time we have any idea of any kind of benefits our community. But I do know, in speaking to one of the banks locally, they have people coming into their banks that you think they're doing well, but they're not. I think all of us are very well aware that despite the appearance of everyone eating out, they're really not eating out as much. And even $25 for one month on a utility bill will help a lot of people. You know, you all know that. But again, Dan, you're going to have to see also that there's quite a bit of debt sitting inside of the utility arrears, basically, that has, I don't know what's going on with that. I don't know if we have a collection company or something, but there are people in there that owe 800, $900 and it's just, you know, do they deserve a break on their water bill when they already owe all this money? Well, like we said, if we're going to give it to all the residents, then let them apply that towards their debt. Which is why I don't really care for a micro loan. I'd rather it be a utility thing. That way it goes back to the city and they pay off their water bill. I think that makes it clean. But anyway, that's all I have to say about that, what they need to do and then come back to us.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to let everybody know that we're just looking at radar and we've got some serious storms coming in. So if we lose you, we'll hang out and see if we can get it back.
Okay.
Couple more things, so.
I'm ready to move forward to Act 10.
Garrett?
Where is Garrett?
We lost him. Stan?
Deputy Mayor, can you step in?
We lost him too.
Mr. City Manager, you're it.
Well, looking out the second story window, it's bad.
And here too. So let's go ahead on.
Okay, somebody go ahead and move us on to Act 10. I guess I will. Old Firehouse Church Services Center, it's Councilor Deputy Mayor Spurlock wanted that on the agenda, but he's not there.
Oh, he was concerned that, he wanted to find out if the, this had been.
Find out what?
Demolishing.
Pete?
What?
Can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
What I think Jerry is saying is Deputy Mayor Spurlock called and he wants the church service center out of the old Yana building as fast as we can get them out. And he didn't want to go to bids. He wanted me to just get some quotes on tearing down, demolishing the old fire station. And actually, that's on my manager report. We've just gone out to bid on them because I don't know what it's going to cost to knock down the building. And I, if it's over 25,000, then we went out to get bid or got quotes. So it's, it's gone out the bid, but that's what it was.
Well, I think he also wanted to make the church service center people perfectly clear that they're not going to be able to use the Yana building after expiration of the date of termination.
Correct.
Well, isn't there a term on that, that you have to notify them within so many days of it renewing itself?
It's 30 days, I believe, but their leases have been up until October 28th.
Well, wouldn't it be kind of pushing them out too soon if we don't have some other plan in place for the building itself? I mean, it may take three months to get the building demoed once bid, you know?
Part of his concern was that when their lease, the end of their lease date comes, is that we won't have our stuff done and they won't have anywhere to go and that they'll just think that they can stay there until whenever.
Well, let me ask you this. I think the contract says that there's a 30 day out and that can be done at any time of the term of the contract. You don't have to wait until the calendar, until the anniversary date. It could be done, I think. So it doesn't really matter that it's a calendar year, you know, contract. But I mean, are they aware? Because we've had this conversation before about, you know, what are they going to be able to do? What do they want? You know, we don't want to give them every penny that we have in terms of what's in that insurance fund. The premise was we only had about $98,000 to start with and we want to demo the building with that. So whatever the balance of that is, we have to decide if we want to have a portion of that or do we still want to pave that parking lot across the street? It just seems like we don't have a full story there. But if they end up vacating the Yana building, you know, are they going to take over this one piece of property? If we're going to give them money to build something there, then what's their commitment to that? And do we have any kind of an agreement with them with that? It just seems that we're the ones making the decisions for them and they're the ones who are going to be occupying the building.
Right. We don't have any kind of an agreement with that yet. I know you have spoken to them and I've spoken to them. I'm not really clear on whether we've come to any kind of a definite determination. So maybe it's something that we just need to, maybe when we start having our physical meetings again, maybe they need to come in. You know, I don't know.
Hey, Kim, this is Brenda. Why don't you and the city manager get in touch with them, talk to them, get something in writing, they propose what they want and then bring it back to us?
We can do that. Okay.
I looked at the lease. I don't have the signed copy, but based on what I, you're right, is 30 day notice? With or without?
Anytime. 30 day notice anytime by either party.
With or without cause, right?
Right.
Yeah.
My question is to Dan at this point. You had said that the insurance money for, other than the airport money for, you know, anyway, the insurance money for this particular building went into the unassigned fund. Is that unassigned fund required to have any basic percentage of cash, basically, that we cannot touch? Or is that money the go-to account that when you need something, that's where you go?
That's basically, yeah, that's the rainy day fund. And again, I don't see where that money was, you know, I think I said my belief was it was put there, it should become part of, or equity. Because otherwise we would see, you know, a restricted designation in the financial statements, so.
Well, wouldn't it be more prudent to have it that way? That way the money is tagged. Otherwise, it does have a tendency to disappear. It'll just go into that fund and then everyone loses it if they don't keep tabs on it. I mean, I swear, if I had not been talking about it for the last year and a half, no one would know that that money was in there. So that's how things disappear. They just go into a fund and no one knows. So I would like to see that money get tagged exactly for what it was intended, which is insurance reimbursement. But we won't, you know, tag that amount of money. We need to know what the church service center is planning to do so that we know exactly how much would have to be taken out. Which goes to my second question. Does that require a budget amendment when you're taking money out of the unassigned fund?
I'm not sure. I know that in these, in my former career, it did require a designation by the board. However, and I, again, I'm just going to talk about the 280,000 as part of the police, the old police station. I don't know if any of that was used
Right.
for mitigation, you know, just to prop the building up. I don't, you know, so that kind of gets sort of cold and I don't know how far back or if I can, if it's possible to identify exactly where those funds went. If it, if we did use some of it, a large enough expense, Mark and I had this discussion. We could look back at some bid documents and maybe there was something out there, but it would have been, you know, two years ago this month, actually, that we received the money. So I don't know, anyone else recalls, you know, some.
If we, if we did use the money, it wouldn't have been on that building. So I know that we have.
Right.
That's right.
Okay, so but there again, if we used it elsewhere, then that's what, it lessens the pot in the unassigned fund, which is our rainy day fund. So, you know, if the money got spent elsewhere, it was without the knowledge of the council. Because that money should have been set aside for the building because that's what it was intended for. It was a reimbursement. You don't take your house insurance for your roof and buy a car. Well, some people do, but you know.
Some people do, that's exactly.
But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that if the rainy day fund requires a specific amount that remains in there, you know, we need to only subtract what we can. Because at the end of the day, I don't want to have that fund short for our rainy day.
To my knowledge, the only, the only restriction is that it can't go negative.
Right.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I, I just, I just brought it up to Mark. It's beyond me that we're considering spending money on tearing down the old fire station. Whenever, we don't even know what the church service center is willing to do. We have no contract with them whatsoever. I mean, we don't know what money they want to spend, they don't want to spend. And that building is not going to fall down. Is it an eye sore to some degree? Maybe, maybe it is. But why, why are we going to spend the money if they're not going to do something?
But doesn't it have to come down anyway?
Why would it have to come down? It's not going to fall. I mean, we, I mean, Carl Cool does one, then went in it and said it was a sound building. It does have black mold, but nobody's going in the building. It's not going to fall.
Yeah, it's, it's more or less just an economic question because it's going to cost more to rehab it than it would be to tear it down and build another. That's all it comes down to. It doesn't really matter who goes in there or what we build in its place. It's just the fact that it's going to cost more to rebuild it than it would be to tear it down. And that's why it makes sense to tear it down. And that's the direction it's going regardless. It doesn't matter what we do in the future. That's still the way it's going.
Yeah, Stanley, the part of the conversation that you missed, I think, was that Brenda had to staff go to the church service center and get something in writing from them and what their purpose and intent is going to be with that property.
We are three months into this. We still don't have anything like that? That's beyond me. I cannot believe that. I mean, it just blows me away that we're that far behind and we don't have anything. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. I don't, I want to understand.
Okay. Have we received? Go ahead.
I'm not highlighting, so it doesn't show. There it goes. I mean, Kim might speak to that, but when she spoke to them, they really didn't know what they're going to do because they're that they get coming in from the churches because COVID-19 has dried up. So they've had to use whatever money that they've had. So Kim, if you want to add to that when you talk to me.
Yes, when I talked to Mr. Fetterman a few weeks ago, about three weeks ago, maybe three, four weeks ago, he said that they were, they had $10,000 that they were going to put the metal building up with, that they are currently using just to survive because they are getting no donations at this time of COVID out there. They're hoping to be able to build that money back up, but as of right now, they don't have any funds.
And, and you know, most, most nonprofit organizations, funding sources has ceased because of COVID-19. So, so I understand that.
Usually get $3,000. I can't remember if he said it was a month or something, but they, there's a $3,000 deficit that they get just from one location that they haven't gotten a dime of at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have one comment. My only concern is if we're ever going to tear down that old firehouse police station building, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, not only as costs rise, but as if the old is to the point where we need some professional people besides those from the prison to clean it up before it tears down. The longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. So I think our decision should be, do we want to keep the building as is and just let it rot away? Or do you want to tear it down and worry about somebody else what they do with it later on? I personally think we should just tear it down, clear out the ground and then, you know, we did our part, anything else is up to somebody else.
I mean.
With you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stanley.
Okay. Is there anything else on the old firehouse building?
No.
Just move forward with the bid process and let's get it back quick as possible.
Right. All right. Moving on to the regular update from the city manager. Mark, go ahead.
Okay, the, the reports came back for any hazardous material on the Wild Building and Old Fire Station. There was none. We have moved forward. Kim put out the bids, I believe, yesterday. I'm not sure which day the first get in the paper on the Wild Building, the Old Fire Station, demolish both. Also, the windows here on the second floor, which I'm kind of worried right now that may blow out on this weather. And, and also the request for proposal for the administration of the CDBG mitigation, mitigation grants. I stumbled over that earlier with Kim, is gone out. Any questions on that before I move on to next?
Did the ARC, I'm sorry, did the ARC ever follow through with any paperwork for them to do something with their building?
Yes, and they had Carl Cool do the scope of work for them and it was supposed to be turned in. Are you there? Okay, it was supposed to be.
And Kim's, she's going to follow up and give you where we are and all those, I suppose, when I get down to turn it over to him, if you can hear that.
Okay. Okay.
Is, is there not, is there not a possibility that we, we have a guy that's writing for grants for us and all that? Is there not any kind of historic grants that might be available for that Wild Building and for the Brickle Building? Has anybody looked into that?
Well, I'm actually going to be looking into, and I'm just going to start it today. Didn't have the opportunity, but immediately I will be looking into what historic buildings we have, if they have historic numbers. And I'll be doing that before the bids end so that if anything is historical and marked as historical, we will not be tearing that down.
But Kim, you got to keep in mind that the list of historic buildings that are out there, it's, every old house in Avon Park has a historic number. They all have a little H in front of it and then a little sequence of numbers behind it. The gazebo, for example, is considered historic, but it's no, it's a landmark. It's no longer a historic building because it's been altered so many times. All these other buildings that we consider historic, as much as we'd like to consider them historic, they're not because they have been altered so many times. That the only way, the only time they're historic is when you get grants to refurbish them and make them what and unless someone has the money to do that or grants to do that, they're not historic. But you know, there is a list, there is a list, the state has it, that the Division of Cultural Affairs, the Department of State, Division of Historical Resources, Office of Department of Cultural Affairs has a list and it's about 900 items on it. It was done in like 1998 or something and that's, at that time, it was anything that was older than 50 years. Obviously, 20, 20 years have gone by, 22 years, and now we have more historic buildings. But many of those, like the church, the EA Ford Building, which is now pure grit, tell me what's historic about that? Nothing. They're just contributing sites to historic area. They're no longer historic buildings unless you get a grant to fix historic nature and good luck with that.
Okay, so the, so the old firehouse has been altered over the years, you're saying?
It's been altered so many times. The only way that you, if you want it to be historic, it's because you want the designation to get funding to keep it historic. So, you know, if that's the goal, it'll take you a couple of years to get a historic grant because you have to give them first your engineering plans, which you're hoping they'll give you money for that. And then you have to go back to that same organization and get the infrastructure dollars to fix it. So you're two years away. You're a year away already. You're already behind a year, your application. Anyway, you can call what I told you and they'll be able to give you more info on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. What else we got?
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The, the playground property over there at the Housing Authority. Yeah, I wish I was up to, but as I, I brought up the, I think it was the last meeting that there was a problem with the survey lines. One went over the other, so the surveyor went out. He's, he's finished that. He got, he got it to us yesterday, but not in PDF form. He's going to be emailing it in PDF form to me in the morning. So I can get it to Nikki Day with Bryant Miller and Allo, who are waiting on that. So hopefully we'll move forward. Like I said, they're, that's what they're waiting on. Classic Palladium, myself and Robert spoke with them. They wanted to give us some history of what's going on. I talked to Jerry earlier. There, Jerry will be contacting Jerry prior to beginning next week when they both have time to talk. So that's where we are on that one. Mr. Two Roger, the Lake Bird Lift Station. Myself and Kim and Rick talked to him. He had some questions. He had some questions from Rick on who was tied in there and some other questions. We, I spoke to him a couple of days ago and we're setting up. We, we got, I talked to Jerry on that too. We got to find out when Jerry is free next week so that we can get Jerry involved in the conversation with Mr. Two Roger. So we'll be doing that next week when Kim gets with Jerry to see when he's available. Because I, I know like the rest of us, he's been very busy. If any other council members, I know one, because Kim told me, Councilmember Bernard called her. There was a lady calling him about the ball fields not being open. I don't know, I'll follow it way up through the governor's office. Casey Bryant, I, she called in here twice for me today. I returned her call and it's not, not ours. It's the high school head field, which the school board oversees. And they're refusing to open it right now. And to say she's upset would be kind. She's just upset her, her boys and others can't get down there and play. So she got ahold of you. I've already talked to her and I told her she needs to get ahold of the school board because she talked to the superintendent and they told her they weren't opening up till they talked to the health department. So again, just in case you get that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I have a question that's come up a couple of times I've been here. And I guess by practice, we have people calling in, usually probably irate people or want things done so they want to talk to a council member. But I guess as a practice here, they do not give out your cell number or put them on the website. They, they give them your email address. So I'm asking you, do you want your cell phone numbers given out if anybody calls in and wants it? Or stay by the practices we have now to give them your, your email addresses?
No, I don't want my person's cell number given out.
I think the email is a, is a good way to go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I agree, but I, I just wanted you to make that decision, like I said.
I, I like the email process, but if somebody emails me and wants to talk to me, then, and then they give me their cell phone or their phone, I will call them. But I don't want to have it out there. I've given it out, but I don't advertise it on a regular basis, so.
Okay. And, and I thought, I, I figured that's what, but I wanted to ask you because it's your decision, not mine. And with that, Kim.
Yeah, we're pretty easy to find. I have people coming to my house, you know?
Mine too.
Wait, wait, no, yeah, we know, I know both of you do, yeah.
They find me too.
Kim, what do you got?
Kim, you want to give the updates on the grants?
On the mitigation, on the mitigation of grant process? We've talked to Kimberly Horn, who has been working on the master planning part of it. Water will not be allowed to, we will not be allowed to do a master plan on water through this grant. It's questionable at this time if we're going to be able to do a master plan for wastewater, but it's still a maybe. So we are moving forward with that one and we are moving forward with stormwater. I don't know of anything else that we can master plan. I've, I've asked the engineers and they can't think of anything either. So that's where we're at right now is the possibility of a wastewater master plan. A definite, if we get this grant, it'd be definite on a stormwater master plan. Then the next things that we would have to be looking into will be the infrastructure part.
Okay.
And.
Part of it is, the hardening part of it is ready. I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you. The recreation center does not qualify for hardening because it's already a shelter, so.
Well, to, to add to that, it's, if it needed a new roof, it would. But what Carl done the scope of work on, like updating the kitchen and other area, needed a roof, Corbett said yes, but seeing it doesn't, then it doesn't, won't fall under the, the grant.
Even though there are leaks in there right now?
All I know is one leak. Robert told me today because a screw needs to be replaced.
It's been leaking for like three years.
Ever since.
Huh?
As, ever since Hurricane Irma.
Okay, well, we can call that, we can call that Carl's intention and have him check that out.
Okay. What else do we have?
Hi, can I say?
I have one question.
Hi, all this rain we've been getting, I was at the Boys and Girls Club today. There is no area leaking except by the kitchen and it's a spot that we repaired six months ago. And it started to leak again and I've got a roofer coming out tomorrow to take care of that spot. But we have not found any other spot in there that's leaking. Maybe tonight with this heavy rain we're getting, something may show up.
Robert, this is Brenda. During the Hurricane Irma, it poured in there.
It did.
It, it, I was there, I'm telling you.
Yeah. Mitchell Strickland was there and he told me all about it, how bad the water was coming in. But as of right now, we have not seen, even with all this rain we've been getting, we have not found any leaks anywhere, except for that one.
You might want to get a roofing person to get up there and look at it because if, if it leaked during Hurricane Irma and, and it, I can, it, it can, it's going to leak again during a hurricane.
I have a roofer coming out tomorrow. I'm going to have them get on top of that building and walk it out to make sure that there's no screens missing or, or anything up or loose. And if there is, they can, they can give us a price on getting that repaired.
Are any places that may potentially blow in rain in very high winds?
That's, I think that was the problem. I mean, the center of the gym was wet and flooded. No, you know, all the cops and everyone had the meters and stuff and just avoid the slick floor and all. Our hurricane shelter became a, a little tide pool inside. And yeah, it was during the storm. So right now it probably won't affect much, but it will do it again. I remember someone saying that it was the horizontal rain that was coming in. There's a, there's a gap in there somewhere. And there's also a bubble up on the top on the ceiling where you could tell that water did come in and it did cause some damage and that bubble is still there. It looks like it filled up with water and it expanded.
Yep.
There is several bubbles in there and I've been monitoring those bubbles for the last year. They have not grown in any size whatsoever. I can take you in and show you every one of them. My beach, in that section.
Well, the water came from somewhere.
Yeah, and, and any event, just have the roofer check it out in those spots specifically and see if we can't come up with anything.
Will do. I'll, I'll, he's coming out tomorrow and I'll have him walk that whole thing out.
Very good. Anything else on the update?
No, ma'am.
Is there anything else for the good of the city?
I just had one thing that I wanted to add. I think you all got the letter from Nucor, from Eric Laramore. I spoke to him on the phone yesterday or the, I think it was, no, I emailed him. Anyway, I think they thought that we were going to be discussing their issue tonight. And I just wanted, I suggested to him that we would put this on the council next, I believe, is June the 8th. So between now and then, I'm not an engineer and some of the interpretation of what their engineering commentary and words are, are, you know, Chinese to me. So, and I don't mean that as a xenophobic comic, but comment.
We know what you mean.
Because I don't understand. I know, I know, but you never know. Anyway, are we going to have, you know what I'm saying? Are we going to have anyone from Kimberly Horn or I don't know whoever's working on this project to be able to decipher for us what exactly it is that the concerns are that we can understand in layman's terms?
Yeah, of course, Kimberly Horn there as well as Carl. And we'll, we'll, we'll try and address a lot of these, these issues.
But can, can we address most of it before we get there? That way we're not figuring it out that night. And instead we have the information that we need to move forward because otherwise it's going to be another month before we do anything. It's just, you know.
We're going, we're going to try and resolve some of these things aside, you know. But there's going to be some things that just, they're just never going to be happy with. Eric Laramore is on the, here so he can talk about that. But we're just never, there are just likely going to be some things we're just not, never going to agree on.
But Jerry, this is Brenda. In his letter, he's asking specific questions and explanations of certain things, which I'm like, Maria, is Greek to me. But could you all, I mean, you talked, asked, just answer his questions?
Can we? Well, yes.
I mean, I'm not, not saying now, I'm just saying.
Right.
This is Eric with Nucor. Yeah, we're, the, the theme of the letter is there's been negotiations and she agreed. All we're asking for is to make sure that we understand what was left, changed over from the ordinance. And when, and there was a couple of other changes. We just want to make sure we understand how they apply or even if they apply to it. So it's not such a concern with what's in it. It's just we want to make sure that we understand it.
I got you. That's what I'm saying.
Very good. I assume that will be done, Jerry?
We'll, we'll talk to them.
Okay. Very good. Is there anything else for the good of the city?
One last thing, as you all know, I have one more last thing every time. When it comes to the Valerie Road Highway 27 project that we put water for, what's the name of the company, the Wawa?
Wawa, yeah.
As far as I know, they're nowhere in sight and we've invested all this money for that water line. Can, is there such a thing as a moratorium? Either hook up at this point or we're going to start charging you? Or, I mean, are we stuck with that and they never came in, all that money getting them there?
Well, I have seen somewhere where there were several of the Wawas that had put their construction and openings on hold for up to a year and a half.
But that's not our fault. I mean, that's not our fault. We gave them something with the intent of them coming in and they have not come in. So at some point, you know, when are, we're losing money because they haven't hooked up. They haven't built their building like they said they would. So this is where.
Because you're running lines for people and you shouldn't do that.
Well, I know, I knew, Jerry, you were going to say that.
And it should never have been done that way. And so what, you're left holding them back because we did it that way.
Okay. So we're holding the bag.
Lesson learned. Lesson learned.
Lesson learned, move on. There you go.
The updates on our new engineer, public works engineer.
There, there's no applications. We can say there's eight, but there really isn't. There are ones that indeed just picks up words and sends it in on its own.
Okay.
Nothing new.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the city?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.